Well, good evening. I think Gary and I are in a tag team this. I'm impressed that you go from traffic transportation to water and wastewater and that. Fire and EMS, you do it all, so. Very similar process where we followed with water. There's some similarities with fire EMS to how you do water and sewer tap fees, but there's also quite a bit of differences. So our charge, working with Andrew and Gary and Robin was, and Drew, to develop some rational nexus for your fire EMS system impact fee. We'd like to get your feedback tonight. We have not prepared any kind of report yet. We wanted to get some feedback from you so that we can continue and move this along and prepare a report that you can use as the basis for your rational nexus. So just walk through some real quick slides and please keep this conversational. Just a few things. The scope of this work is just for the Glenwood Springs Fire Department and not the Glenwood Rural Fire Protection District. Two different entities, so we're only dealing with the city tonight. So rational nexus, the rationale is to determine the growth that will occur over the next 20 years and then project the stations and apparatus that are needed to comply with NFPA 1710, which I'll talk about. ISO standards and master plans. So those three documents, the NFPA 1710, which is this. ISO standards, which insurance underwriters use to set insurance rates. And your existing master plans are kind of a guide with Gary and the Fire Department are doing in terms of station, apparatus, organizational structure, everything. So the goal was for new development to pay for investment in the capital needs required to serve that new development. Again, this is the seminal document that really guides what Gary needs to do for the organization of the department. One of the most critical terms in the whole document is that it recommends an eight-minute response time to be met 90% of the time. Thus, the stations that the city's done a very good job of locating, the three stations which try to do that. One of your earlier master plans said, "Well, in order to meet that eight-minute response time, we should really shoot for six minutes so that we can meet it 90% of the time." But it also talks about what kind of apparatus you need for urban settings, commercial settings, downtown settings, multi-family, complex settings, organizational structure, incident management systems, community-wide risk management. Those are all things that are included in that document. Gary, do you want to?
This is currently the station at 90 Millray. This is Fire Station 1. This was built in 1984. A little further on the presentation, you'll see that this is one of the stations that I'm recommending we probably raise and rebuild or spend a significant amount of money refurbishing the station. But because of this, a lot of years on that, we're very still. Of course, this is the newest one downtown at 806 Cooper. This station, there are no problems with this station. But as our home increases and our need for more specific or different types of apparatus grow, this station is old, but it's maxed out and there's no room to grow. But I'm not proposing that we make any changes to the station at this point. That's the newest, one of the newest, and it's confined. There's no room to add on or anything else. This is the four-mile station at 1880 County Road 117. This one sets on a little larger site. It's one of the stations this year built in 2001 with the bond issue money as well as the downtown station. This one has a little bit of room to grow. It's not cheap, but we could add some additional apparatus maybe to this station and keep it still aesthetically, please. So that's one of the things that over the next 20 years, I believe, is something we need to consider. This is just one of our, actually, this is a brush truck without the slip in it, but this is one of the four-wheel-drive utility-type vehicles that Louis was able to find and pitch up. These are becoming, that type of vehicle is becoming more useful and is reflected in the 20-year plan as these smaller vehicles, much like the smaller buses you were talking about, can get into some of these. We're getting a lot of urban interface issues, pylons, some of the other areas that we need these smaller, more agile vehicles to deal with a lot of fire issues. This is the current aerial. That truck picture there is scheduled for replacement next year under our capital replacement, but that's about $1.5 million investment. One of the things that I anticipate could happen and is reflected in our initial planning notes here is that as we expand, I've identified that we may want to consider, or we should consider, a second one of these for the city. And so that represents a substantial capital cost.
I believe that that's, you know, there's obvious tight limitations to how tall the building, this aerial truck, could service. Yep, this kind of ties into, you know, our other projects we're doing right now. We're just looking at revision trailers on our development regulations and so on. One possibility in that process might be that we permit taller buildings. I guess it would be good to know, you may or may not know the answer right here right now, but, you know, how tall the building can be serviced with this ladder truck? What would we need to go to a, you know, I guess, what are the increments that we need?
This is 105 foot of vertical reach from ground level. This is pretty much the norm or the standard. There are taller areas available. And a gap is where the community.
Gary, what does that translate to in terms of stories?
Okay, so given the angle of the ladder, this truck can effectively service a four-story building, okay? What we're running to, and this is where, again, some of the development comes, but we need to be able to get within 35 feet of the building in order to reach that third roof or the three-story building. By ISO standards, three buildings, three stories or more, no, I'm sorry, five or more buildings, three stories or more, this one, a community needs one of these within two and a half months. Well, Glenwood is just that size to where if we start building tall buildings on both sides, we can't afford to have that one aerial now service for these. So that's why I say over the next 20 years we should. I can do some research, Mike. I know they make them as large as 200-foot, but they, if you're urban area, that's better than they do in the city.
Hey, I just, from my own job education here, what do you do differently? Want to see, you know, say you're down on it, or we have 30, 40-foot historic buildings, you're not putting a ladder truck up to it, so at one point you quit training it to address a bit of a lot of charge and you approach it from a completely different perspective?
It's my opinion, and I admittedly am not a glove-versed in tall buildings, except it's not part of my rep as well. But I think that when you get to the five-story building level, that's when you should, in fact, stop trying to reach it from the outside. But then you have to dedicate more manpower to being able to produce an effective interior response to the highways.
Does that have any impact on the ISO rating?
It probably does, but when you get to that tall of a building, then they become individually rated by ISO. And so it's not a function of their community rating system. It's a function of how that building is built, designed, you know, number of elevators, quality of the sprinkler system. All of those kinds of things will have an effect on the ISO rating. But, you know, that's when it becomes manpower intensive. Because then you have to be able to accomplish internal rescue as opposed to external rescue or internal overall fire suppression. For four-story buildings, the hospital, the hospital, the two mirrors are actually taller and the corridors.
I ask you one more question off track and then we can get back to impact fees. So just a financial question that you mentioned this truck was getting ready to be replaced.
Yes.
It seems like when we sell it, or when government sells it with it, it sells really cheap. Yeah, and so is there any benefit to, if we're going to need two of these trucks anyway, and they're $1.5 million, that's $3 million for the two of them, is there any benefit to buying one new one and having this one as the reserve truck? And just don't sell it, because we end up giving the damn things away anyway.
That's a really good, it's a really valid point. However, this is a 1990 truck and it's, the technology has changed so much that.
But it'd be kind of a reserve truck.
Yeah, it would be a reserve truck and it's quite well-made, but I have no roof to put it under if I buy a new one.
Okay, I just don't know, because I see these prices of what these expensive vehicles sell.
I think her entirely. If we had a place to keep it, it would be cost-effective to do so. But the ongoing maintenance on a 25-year-old vehicle starts, you know, there are some parts that eventually are going to start becoming obsolete. So it's a fine line, but it's a very good point. And if we have the roof space, yeah, we'll probably get $20,000 for it when we trade it off.
Never mind, if you have an engine that's going in for refurb.
That's correct.
And that cost of that, it was?
$200,000.
Yeah, so, you know, I imagine the cost on this would be considerably more than that than the structure.
This was redone in 2000 and that's, it's already been refurbished once at a cost of $250,000. But it's just, I don't want to say it's obsolete, but it's approaching. This is one of our 2009 ambulances. We have two of these left and we have one that's on a Dodge chassis. So it looks a little bit differently. In fact, we were running three of these, one first out of each one of the three stations. So they're able to achieve these. Louis alluded to the eight-minute response time for fire. If you back that down to EMS, we're looking at the target response time for EMS is more between the four to six-minute range. Particularly in the event of cardiac issues or substantial damage happens at EMS. So that's where it's been placed that way. That is our trial rescue vehicle that runs up and down the bike paths. It's a Ford Ranger. It's the only thing narrow enough to fit upon the bike path all the way out to Hainé Lake and the other bike paths. And then that is one of the three engines. We have three identical right now. That's one of the three engines that we're, one of the three identical engines, that is typical of the one that's going to be going in for refurb here next month. That's more of a wildland unit, that particular unit. We did surplus out last year and replaced with a four-wheel-drive, a new four-wheel-drive engine, so that was one of the older photos. But that's an interface engine. And that's one of our two, we have two of these at the two outlying stations, 1800 gallon water containers, which paid off in the last ISO evaluation. And I anticipate hearing any more, but I don't think it'll be our advantage during the last couple of years over time.
So, transit, so that kind of lets you know what you have and what you own and what you need, transitioning into the rational nexus. First of all, we looked at, this is a 20-year lookout, so what kind of growth is a city going to achieve in the next 20 years? So the demographics we used came from your comprehensive plan, which was done in 2011. And they used data from the Department of Local Affairs, the state demographer in Garfield County, and projected a growth rate of 1.92% per year, which is what we used. So from 2016 to 2036, there was a, with that 1.92% population increase, percent results in about 4,700 more people, which equates to about 1,965 EQR, SFPVs roughly. So transitioning, I think before I get to that, I'd like to read to you what your current code says about this. Your current code says for fire and emergency services impact fee, the purpose of this fee is to help offset the financial impacts of new development on the emergency systems and is charged both residential and commercial development. So the city Fire Department did a study in the year 2000 and at that time came up with a system impact fee of $558. It had a 5% escalator per year. So that today, that amount has risen to $1,806 per SFPV, per EQR.
And that, sorry, Louis, when did that start?
2000. So that's where you are today. Probably a 5% escalator over that time period is not a rational nexus, so.
Too high?
Yes. So what Gary and I worked on is a model which said, here are the, what needs to be done to your three stations. And these are, sorry, this is a little hard to read. And here's the apparatus that you're going to need over the next 20 years to meet that new growth. And so I'd like to tell you what this really says. So. But the plan is to increase the size of the County Road 117 facility and the Millray Road facility. So we worked with Gary on some square footage and square footage prices. There is actually a mistake on this, that Station 3 was a holdover for some earlier work that Gary and I did, and I just left it in there by mistake. Gary is also projecting the need for new and updated apparatus. And you can see which pieces of equipment in red. So looking at a new ambulance, a new ladder truck, and a new four-wheel-drive support apparatus. So the total capital cost in today's dollars for all of those is $4,110,000. We have the same issue with this that we do water and wastewater is, how much do you pay for this out of your ongoing mill levy assessment and sales tax, which support the fire? How much should be paid for by system impact fees? We used a figure of around 50%.
50%?
50%. 50% to be paid for by your current mill levy assessment and sales tax, 50% by system impact.
Louis, can I ask, where did that, what was that difference?
Well, in the water and wastewater world, there is kind of a, for enterprise fund accounting, there's certain rules that people try to follow. That operation and maintenance is paid for by service fees, wholesale infrastructure generally paid for by tap fees. We did not find that black and white of the demarcation when we studied the fire EMS. However, coincidentally, the new growth, that number of EQR is slightly less than 50% of your current, your current number of EQR. So that is pretty close. But I think that's certainly one of the feedbacks we'd like to hear is what, what do you think that should be going forward?
One kind of related question would actually apply to water and sewer as well. I want to try and understand better is. I'm not sure, I've heard that we are very limited in how we can spend our revenues we receive in the year 2017. But we're worried with the spend, it is very limited for water and sewer. Is that limited by city ordinance, by state statute, by God, you know? Who limits that?
There's a little bit of everything, probably the most controlling. I think it's really the language and statute that kind of directs it towards certain items. You know, obviously trying to avoid, I think, using impact fees to fund personnel, for instance. It tends to direct it at more tangible things. The fire impact fees are, I think, maybe slightly more flexible, but the code limits it to, I believe, capital expenditures right now, doesn't it, Gary? And we've defined that as anything with over a five-year useful life. So I can't remember, because we had a whole conversation, like SCBA gear, whether that was over or under.
$500 per piece.
Yeah.
Are we able to use it to retire debt or to cover debt of capital expenditure?
Oh, yeah, no, I think that would be.
I'm pretty sure that, as explained by Robin, on water and sewer, for example, we've been subsidizing the wastewater plant to the tune of $800,000 a year. And this year, it's $650,000 a year. And then none of our impact fees would go to reduce that amount and.
I think that's more of a policy choice than a.
So that's our.
Yeah, that's your choice. I mean, that's been one that's been pretty consistent with the city not to use impact fees for debt, you know, in the analysis of your debt repayment, but to rely on rates, which is fiscally a sound approach. Some communities have relied on impact fees to fully fund their debt.
My, I guess, my only thought is to be, because we don't, you know, I know we have, we budgeted this year, and I know I'm taking this back to water and sewer. That's where I know the numbers. But, you know, we budgeted a total of about $100,000 of revenue from water and sewer impact fees. But we don't really know what that's going to be. It depends entirely on how many of the incentives we give.
Right.
And it could be zero, it could be, you know, $750,000. Couldn't we on an annual basis to use that, to reduce that subsidy that we're basically giving the water?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, I think you could. You know, and I don't know the intricacies of the policy choices that are being made in the budget, but typically if you're using that for debt retirement, you're going to have to pull it from someplace else for what that was being used for before. You know, it's a, where you spent, you know, you can move the pots around, but you've still got the same pots that you're working with, the same total dollars.
All right, sorry.
No, good questions. So again, the capital cost that the Fire Department is looking at over the next 20 years is a little over $4 million. 50% of that was attributable to be paid for by tap fees, which is a little over $2 million, and divided by the number of EQR's, 1,965 projected over that time period, results in a cost per EQR of around $1,045. To put that in perspective, the state of Colorado, pretty much most, all municipalities, counties or districts do charge system impact fees. They range anywhere from $200 to $2,500. I looked at the range today. So that's kind of the range that I saw in the state of Colorado. Countrywide, the average in the year 2012 was $512. That was countrywide.
Louis, the numbers you just quoted us are slightly different from what's in this budget?
Yes, because I let that Station 3 holdover oversight back that off.
I would back up, or I would make the comment here, that this capital expenditure that Louis is alluding to, this 5 million, is what we've projected as additional needs. It doesn't allow, it's not allowing for the ongoing replacement of the current inventory. That's in addition to the current, you know, so just a misunderstanding about the total capital.
Right, so the current inventory, though, based on what it seems to be, here would be covered by current mill levy?
Yeah, some sort of renewal of the current mill levy that currently pays for that. What, yes, that would take care of the current inventory.
And within the context of the time period and the total demographic change within the confines of the comprehensive plan, was there any thought that there might be a need for a fourth station somewhere?
You know, I admittedly have not reviewed the comprehensive plan. However, given the geographic boundaries of the current city, as we know, a fourth station would not be indicated in the city. That would be a rural district issue. It would probably be aligned with either Grove out south on 82 or up the form of Coeur d'Or.
Is there any discussion about consolidating?
There's no serious discussion.
You're right, like London Grove, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, consolidating like station one.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I think I'm a consolidating fire department. We've had some discussions about the potential of relooking to experience. We tried a few years ago, Town Valley, with Carden Vale. I just don't think we're at that point. But in terms of consolidating stations, yes, actually, I have. I have proposed that we could, in fact, consolidate the 806 Cooper and the 90 Millray stations into one larger station. And still meet the guidelines under 1710, the response times, give them the right location, which it kind of ends up on the north side of the grid. So.
Finding that location might be the biggest problem.
Well, yeah, it might take. These are known, and I can prove the price tag on those. That's an unknown, but the real estate alone could be pretty substantial. No, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that, because it has been something I've mentioned. At the end of the day, it would probably be good for the company in operation. Given the current standing and what I perceive to be ongoing staffing needs, you know, you can do a lot of things with five people out of one building that are harder to achieve with three people and two people and trying to bring them together and do these things. I just think you can break those, you can break those people up into effective teams when they start out.
Yeah, we're just hoping to pull, don't make that my own.
No deal, shit.
So a question for you with regards to rational nexus. Do, since it seems to make a difference in the type of taxing system that you have in the city and or county or wherever you're trying to do this rational nexus, would be a lot if we were in an environment where we live mostly on real estate revenues, like they do back in Nebraska, your real estate taxes are extremely high and your sales tax doesn't go to the city like it does here. So if we were to assume that these 4,700 people were going to show up in a city that's very heavily ran off of sales tax, to me, that's an extremely important number to put in to your rational nexus. Because just run a really, really, really brief scenario, if each one of those 4,700 people show up in growth over the next 20 years. years, if they're spending 500 bucks each a month, times 12, times .037, which is our tax rate, it's $22 million that that growth is going to bring back to the city in sales tax. Makes that $4 million, $5 million number that you're looking for pretty easy to attain without taxing them upfront, maybe actually impeding growth by hitting them hard upfront, instead of looking at how much are we going to get on the back end of this by this growth? And are we going to actually like have growth? Are we going to try and stop it at the beginning? So that's where I think where our policy is. But I think if you're going to do a rational nexus, especially in a town that's so sales tax driven, and you're based on growth, then you got to look at the sales tax those people are going to bring to the table. That's it. Maybe I'm way off base, but it just makes sense to go...
How much sales tax does a housing developer bring to the table?
But I'm saying the people that live there, that they're going to live in town, spend money in town, they're going to buy gas, buy the trees.
No, 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 but they're spending their money here. You know, you have a family of three, they're going to...
They're going to buy gas here, groceries and clothes and load stuff to fix up their home. And I mean, I just figured 500 bucks, maybe that's high. I don't know. That's probably low for my family. We spend more than 500 bucks a person. But I'm just saying, I think that should be part of the nexus, so that we're, so that we're really looking at actual numbers. Because I think you're, you're looking at that growth as a stagnant number, it's not bringing any more money to the table. And it is, it's bringing a lot, even if I'm half off, the number's 11.
We've had these conversations before, how these developments don't really pay for themselves in the service costs. But I just, I mean, I don't actually want to run the numbers here. I think even if you gave each person of those 4,700, 250 bucks, it's hard to live in this town that's spending $250 a month. So that's bringing sales tax revenue to the town by promoting that growth. And hopefully that grows within our boundaries that already exist, and some of your equipment's already serving that boundary anyway. So we need to, let's do a deeper analysis and understanding, because it's always been my understanding that residential housing development never pays for its own, what it actually tries to service for those developments.
I think you probably have some argument where you could say that in, like, let's say the Verdi Ranch, that annexation, I mean, that's, now we're going way outside of our borders, and now it's going to cost us more to go serve that extra ground. I mean, if you're, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking within our urban, within our boundaries right now, if you start annexing inland, and now you have to service that eight-minute range, now it becomes, that station up there needs to be two or three times as big. No question, I think that growth, that type of growth up there, I think is a very much a question.
What's that?
Very much a question. Well, that would mean, in fact, to me taking the need for a much larger station up there, and that developer would need to pay for that. I guess that's...
But if you're putting a project in, you know, in town, where you're not adding a lot more additional infrastructure, and you're not adding, you know, the need for another fraction, you're not adding, you know, then the incremental cost of servicing that family, that residence is much lower than the cost of serving an expanded...
An expanded annexation of four miles.
Except to your premise, the only flaw in it for me is the fact that you're not going to be able to sequester that money for that purpose, to delay those fees. Because if we have that kind of demographic growth, and we generate that kind of income, that money is going to put us that much closer to a South Bridge, or something of that nature. There are going to be ongoing infrastructure needs that are going to want that money elsewhere.
I agree with that.
Absolutely. And so, you know, it seems to me that these fees have a bearing on how we get off the ground. And it seems fair to me. But again, it's one thing to sit and calculate the funds in a perfect world, but hanging onto the floor of that purpose.
But I guess my point, Stephen, was is if we're going to use these numbers in a rational nexus, we got to be honest with ourselves of what that number actually means. And that rational nexus isn't taking into account any...
I don't think it should.
And that's, that's perfectly...
Simply because, look at the downturn we just came through. It's hard to tell where we're going to be in 20, 20 years. I, I, I would love to try about...
Don't fund the capital needs of the fire department.
They always have, until we fastly know that, in two years' time.
No, no, no. Most of the current infrastructure is paid for with a property tax bond issued both in the city and the district. That's where most of this capital has come from. And then the ongoing capital replacement is paid for off of property taxes in both, both...
Really, I think in the city, we had a...
Yeah, there is. There's a small, there's a bond payout, and there's an additional $157,000 that's designated purely for capital replacement. That's what's funding the ongoing replacement of the current capital infrastructure. Then we did a temporary operational tax increase three years ago now.
I have two questions.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm running out of time. I just need to get two, two questions. One, is there any consideration for the fact that there are certain structures and, like in the downtown area, that are maybe not as at risk as, you know, some other areas that are in greater fire hazard areas, things like that? I mean, as far as the...
Louis has, Louis has a breakdown in EQR. I would say one thing to address Todd's concern and where I think we might be able to go with this part of the discussion, would be to look at that 15% figure, and that's an easy place to factor in, whatever type of a sales tax growth you might expect.
Yeah, I just think it should be considered.
I'm not sure if I can...
My other question is, and I think we're going to go now, that the basis for, you know, if you put on a multifamily, the secondary residential areas, the 265, because you've got, I mean, the up to two bedrooms is 4.75. That doesn't seem necessarily rational to me. And I would like to see, I mean, take that down far. That would be my question.
Well, the biggest cost, oh, I mean, the biggest service cost is related to emergency services, EMS, things like that, fire, fire response, but our equipment's expensive disproportionately, which is 5% of capital. So, yeah, understanding that, I don't know, I'm trying to set up, if you understand that, I don't know if that's right or wrong, with those factors. But we really pay for expensive fire equipment and emergency services.
It's one of the few times we pay really huge amounts, or something you hope you never have to do.
Mary, just quickly, you've got about three more minutes in order to change the room to be on time for your 7:00. I wanted to announce to the public, and I know we're here and already notified the paper, your agenda on the 17th will include a work session with a more comprehensive discussion of system impact fees, water and wastewater. And the setup for that is to present a range of choices, everything from status quo to no fees at all, and everything in between, including affordable housing and attainable housing, an important distinction. So... Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of overlap, or there's some overlap, but I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that work session. But more importantly, there will be an agenda item, even if it is only direction to staff to develop the appropriate ordinance. It's impractical to develop eight separate ordinances, depending on what you might do. But the reason that matters is, unlike a work session, an agenda item, the public would be present to get comment. And so you can do whatever you want with that. I wanted to make sure in your last two minutes that you all didn't have any question for the expert, experts, excuse me, chief.
It's all right. We're at a point where Louis wants to explain.
Yeah. According to Rex, we're off the stage. One last point, classification is important. It's generally very similar to the water classification. And EQR for a typical single-family house, we provided lesser amounts for smaller housing, but smaller housing does create a demand of fire. We took off all the water demand criteria that has no impact. And on commercial, the industry standard is just to have one overall category for all commercial per thousand square feet. That's usually 2.3 per thousand square feet. However, if there's a special review required for a gas station or hazardous facility, allows the city to look at that on a separate mode. Again, I think the big policy decision from you is what, how much of that delta of the things you need for the growth should be paid for by sales tax, mill levy assessment, or sales system.
Something I would like to write and look at is how we historically spent the money collected on this. And does it just kind of go into the fire department overall, general fund, if you will, the fire department, because of your mark specifically for... All of your factories that we've, that historically is uncollected, we put into that equipment replacement. So they augment what property taxes are going for, and you just put into that, and then you do the expanded part.
Does he give you any direction, no, at this point?
I'd ask Drew, if he could compile about the next meeting, and we're going a little more in depth on the 17th, what the impact fees have been for about the last seven, eight years in every category, both residential and commercial. I'm just curious, you know, how much money we're really talking about here? Because we haven't had hardly any growth since 2007, 2008. So are we sitting here arguing over a few thousand dollars to, to...
We can research that historical. One of the larger ones under the current impact fee structure, which admittedly is pretty high, was Silver Greens. And there was about a $90,000 fire impact fee involved for that complex.
Then we, we basically reclaimed that whole thing.
We didn't do fire. You're not allowed to, right? Well, you can.
I thought we gave them back every, every year, water, sewer, fire, parkland, school. We didn't run out of development money.
We didn't do fire?
We need to change over?
Yep. All right. Sorry for not giving you great directions.